...annoying us this evening, the time is 7:08. Roll call please.
Nelson.
Present.
Lanier.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Gladman.
Here.
Krieger.
Here.
Here, and a quorum is present.
First item on the agenda, audience comments, and we have two audience members who kind of signed up to speak. The first member is Mr. Streger.
Is, my questions have been answered, I don't need to make a statement.
Oh, okay, thank you for your attention. And Mr. Kenwright.
Yes. Hi, Kenwright. I have a daughter, my daughter, this is Ray Moore, and my daughter, who was so much ahead in the school, she's been going there since she was in kindergarten, and historically, the buses have always come and pick her up from her house. Bus schedule initially was, it was give a certain time, and it would take five minutes either way, the buses, you live there, just outside the window, see the buses. This year, for some reason, I spoke with the board, or I spoke with the, yes, the bus company, and for some reason, there was a time, I understand that, they were like, to not stay on the, sort of like the main street, and no go back to back, sort of like a cul-de-sac. Many times, even so far this school year, I had to take my daughter to school because the bus doesn't show up, or the bus comes early, and you can't wait to get a time. I made an effort, I contacted the school recently, when I go outside, the bus will be there at seven thirty, seven seventy, I go outside at seven thirty-four, the bus is pulling away. So I reminded the staff, it's pulling away. After I contacted the, the bus company, and I understand everything's digital, they didn't firm the routes, things like that, they talked to the driver, and now, the driver blocked before to outside for six minutes, just outside their park. Because, as to make sure that, get enough kids to get here, my problem is that, it's a little bit of a cul-de-sac, like, it's not a cul-de-sac, but there's plenty of space for the buses to turn around, and our question, the buses will always come up and just turn around, and circle. We don't have sidewalks, we don't have street lights, we don't have, everything's just streets, there's no, the lawns are big, the properties are far apart. There's other kids, there's another child that goes to the same school, that lives further than cul-de-sac, and he's loved his new trust to ride a bus, because the bus stop is so far down. I know, and I'm not trying to be unreasonable, I ask that my daughter has some type of special treatment, but I cannot see how it's not a waste of time, and a waste, and that bus did there, seven minutes, six or seven minutes, to wait till it's our time, as opposed to just lining up, like they've done in the last three years, we can look and see that the bus is outside, and go outside, and so then, when they're late, for any reason, we can go outside and get on the bus, it's completely, there's no disreliance required to three-point turnaround, complete turnaround, if they did that, they can pick the child up and be back on the main street in less than two minutes. But for some reason, it's like, if they could stand, last year, should we follow the bus, and I'm sure, you know, I'm sure there's other bus issues, last year, we followed the bus, the bus will come pick my daughter up early, and they'll pull up in front of the school, and they'll sit in the bus for ten minutes, they'll get to the school at seven fifty-five, they'll sit, the bus, they came and they go to the bus until eight oh five. So for ten minutes, they'll sit up at the school, at the park, at the school. To me, it's a waste, and this is why I stress to the individual bus, on that bus, it's a waste, the sole purpose of having the school buses is to provide transportation, if they can't, if they cannot get the kids to the school, or therefore, the management should pick the kids up, discourage them from taking the bus, what's the use? I live five minutes from there, it takes me five minutes to drive to the school, why should I go outside and wait for ten minutes? The representative on the bus on the phone said, well, how many cars come down this year? To which I never quite heard, how many cars need to come down before Michael Chauvin's head? Well, there's no sidewalks, it's all private property, there are no lights, there are no traffic control lights, how many? So, I would bring it to more attention, it's something that, like I said, we've more than a month, you know, to the school year, I just don't understand, I just don't understand, and I wish to somewhat, you know, reconsider and do something about, and this, not even, I can talk about the weather, the old weather factor, it's just, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. What bus number is this?
I believe it's bus number four.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
And I've watched, I just, I've videotaped it too, the last few weeks, I've just videotaped it. I go outside, I'm walking the dog, and, let's just start there, just, it's just...
So, I'm, so Dr. Smith has got a problem up here.
Hey, John.
Oh, great.
This is all that.
All of you.
Okay.
Okay. Have you already reached out to the district?
I've talked to, I've talked to, I've talked to the bus company, and they informed me to begin a contact with the district, and then I contacted the district. And when I, when they made it perfectly clear, their goal is to stay on the main road in Ray Moore, their goal is to not go to any cul-de-sac. And I understand that, and they explained to me that there is a, I apologize, they explained to me that, there's multiple school districts that the bus, multiple schools that the bus can pick up for, they have to be prepared at a certain time for park, or drop off of somebody at park, or things like that. And so, I understand that, it's burdensome, but when I watch the bus park for seven minutes, then I can't understand why, I ask, why isn't it better to have the kids sitting for seven minutes, this year, they're sitting for seven minutes before they get on the stop, last year, they're sitting for ten minutes before they get off the bus. I mean, if the bus is gonna be running, get to sit in there, why not, why expose my kids, or any of our kids, to the elements, to the habits, sitting out there? Someone always has to stop there, look, there are little, there are little kids, but you can't, you can rarely see the bus stop from the house, so you can't, it's not like people got windows to the bus there, not no other kids have to, you know, no one, everybody does necessarily have an option to get to the bus from your house, but there's not even a safe place to sit, there's not even a safe place to stand. And that just, it just seems to me that, 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 especially for middle-aged students, not really high school, my son's high school, he can sit out there, it's fine, but little kids, just doesn't seem like it, if you're gonna make any accommodations, which you made for our little kids.
Thank you very much. Ms. LaBelle will follow up with you. Okay, we are going to continue on the agenda, the next item, the Boys Running Club at Flossmore Hills.
Well, the Flossmore Hills Boys Running Club, a wonderful season, they started practice in August, and culminated with a five K at Patriots Park in Homewood on Saturday, October 5th. The team learned a lot about self-esteem and being healthy while also improving their running times each week. There were twenty-four boys in total, led by coaches, this is Laura Surtick, this is Katie Taylor, and Mr. Andy Finley, we're gonna recognize a number of those students. Drop them around. Okay, all of you, mind coming up. Muhammad Salaam. Kate Salaam. Come up, shake my hand, don't wanna leave her hanging. Tristan Turco. Okay, so, we'll line these guys up. Moms and dads, feel free to come up, take some pictures. Any showing? Or is it, both of us, please? Are we good? All right, thanks.
You got a frame there, fridge, that's gonna go on the fridge.
Yeah. You're welcome to stay, but if you get late, so, yeah, you can slip out, I know you've got a lot of time.
Okay. Next on the agenda, superintendents report.
Hope everyone had a wonderful long weekend, and that we're back and ready to take advantage of this short week of school. We just talked about our Flossmore running students, but I'd like to begin this, we might congratulate our young women and men on the Parker Junior High cross-country teams, for their excellent service. Both of the teams are headed to the state meet this coming weekend, with the young ladies getting third place overall, and the young men finishing in first place in their sectional. It's a great set of team wins, to be sure, and everyone's very excited for all of them. It is worth noting, a couple of individual accomplishments, Diana Douglas and Grace Rolland finished first and fourth in the sectional for the ladies, and then, Head Tom Pepley and John Hockenberry finished first and second in their whole sectional. So, there'll be a pep rally on Friday, build some school spirit, as we send both teams down to Garle, Illinois on Saturday morning, which is great, because that Saturday evening, also in local, recognizing are those who excel winners at the awards ceremony that evening. We have five individuals being recognized. Awards of recognition will be given to Lisa Sodelski, in the classroom teacher category, and now to Tehaco, in the early career educator group. Awards of merit, excuse me, will be given to custodian supervisor Dana Fox, in the educational service personnel category, school psychologist Amber Gom, in the student support personnel category, and Karen John, in community volunteer category. I know, I know that not all of them can make it, but I'm expecting about six or seven of us to attend the event, it's gonna be a lot of fun, it's a great time for everyone to get together, to meet people from around the state, and some of the great work happening in education in Illinois. And then finally, it's always a great time, to share that it's National Principals Month, and next week is Principal Appreciation Week in Illinois, and I'm so grateful to all our local administrators for the time, sweat and tears they put into supporting our students and teachers, and just a huge thank you goes out to all of them for their excellent work in District 161, and we're gonna make sure that we spend some time celebrating over the coming weeks, that's in our reports.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Equity and Inclusion Committee Report.
Thank you. Sure, I'll share. So, the, everything, and who's committee met, it was a very productive meeting, had been most of the part, in this case, we were trying to do, really focus a lot on the activity of the year, so do, number two, and subset number one, which is the who, what, and where, it's a lot of time on that, really trying to delve into what it is we're trying to accomplish, and what we really want to do with the committee in terms of, for a year, what we're gonna take into fella to for the next year. So, you notice the whys, the who, the, again, what is, again, we kinda got a little deeper into the levels of what we're trying to get accomplished, and so instead of reading it to you, I've kinda just talked about it, just in front of all of you. And, that really took up a dominant proportion of the time, because a lot of it also didn't focus on, well, who are we trying to bring into this? And, we definitely recognize we wanna bring the community into it, we wanna bring in 233 and 153 into it, so, we also spent some time focusing on the survey I was taking by, with Flossmore, shared that, talked about that. And, that's kind of a quick summary of some of the major highlights, if you wanna add.
No, I think they did a great job, like I was just summing up, a lot of the pieces, really focused on, what are we doing?
Right.
So, start the conversation, so what does it look like as we get started? We have reached out to our colleagues, 153, 233, and those, are hearing back, from them, that there is interest in doing this together, taking these steps as a larger community, so we'll ask for information for the committee to digest and work through.
So, I think it would be great for this committee and the Community Engagement Committee, I mean, I know that a lot of this work will roll up into the larger strategic plan, but I think in the meantime, you know, if there's a way to highlight what's happening in these committees in the regular newsletter, so that the community, I mean, so, once this committee, for example, feels like, can clearly articulate what the it is that we're doing, you may not need to wait for this strategic plan to come out, where the community can hear us voice it, right? So, as many ways as we can find to sort of let people know, hey, here's what's happening in these committees, you know, because, not everybody can attend the Community Engagement Committee, I mean, but there's a lot of stuff that's going on, especially since it's still very early in the year, so I see the diversity dinner idea, which I think is a fantastic idea, but I think, everything that we can throw out and put on the calendar now, so the community can hear about it, as well as activities coming out of Community Engagement, let out there.
You know, and, 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 one other thing that I also really wanna flesh out, and what you said, key word, dinner, we spent a lot of time really trying to break that word out, because, one of the main concepts is that, when people talk about dinner as a social event, and really what we're trying to get at is, trying to make sure that the stakeholders who are involved in this community, have an opportunity to really have, speak to where they think, we actually might wanna focus some of our attention, for example, diversity could not just be about race, it might be about schools, diversity could be about those parents that have children, those parents who don't have children, so diversity could be a lot of different things, a lot of different people, and so, what we almost have started saying, instead of people are dinner, we've started saying gathering, trying to again, to extract those things that will allow people to kind of feel inclusive in the entire process, because, the one thing that I would say about trying to, trying to help us to incorporate equity and inclusion into make-up of the 21st century student or child, which it is all about, is that this is a very complicated, no one right way to do with thing, and so it's gonna look different to everybody, so that's what that whole concept was.
You know, just listening to the dinner idea, it reminds me of something we did do at some point, as a way to really engage the community more, actually board meetings, we prepared a board meeting up with, kind of like cooking classes, you know, where we had some community, they went through a series of, of some minor cooking things, so, I would, I'd just feel this out there, to see what your thoughts were, maybe having some sort of, of, of team cooking event, where, you know, we've talked about having, you know, district barbecue, where...
Chili cook-off.
Chili cook-off, something where, people could come together and then add to, and I'm sure, so that really they're bringing, you know, different elements, and giving a chance to sort of talk ahead of time, you know, people from different schools, maybe you don't know what state, in your, your five education circle, but, just as a way of sort of, almost like a cooking mixer, you know, and then, you know, share some food and then share some ideas.
To your, to your point, one of the ideas that came out of it, is along that same line, one of the members was discussing, they're involved with other kinds of things like this, and they said that, one of the ideas would be to make sure that when people do gather, that we don't take people who are from the same elements, and so, for you or Sabrina, you said it was some people from western, from western, so that we make sure you get a more diverse group, because in that way, again, one of them that brought out was that, communication, if you're, if you're all the same, you can never be talking, if you have to, at least you get to know each other different, that would be helpful, so that's, to your point, and another thing we also recognize is that, we have to get representation from, at least all of our schools, and so that's something we're trying to work on also.
But, I wanted to speak to that, as far as all these committees, they're open and cul-de-sac to all schools, all parents, right? So, any, any, any...
We boost them like...
Every single minute.
So, and again, this is the challenge we've talked more and off about for the last couple of years, is, you know, how to really get people to, to a meeting, or to a school function, that is, doesn't involve, you know, children playing some sports, or, you know, dancing or singing or something, and, and really trying to look at, for reasons for people to come, so, you know, literacy nights, science nights, those are great, and I think that, you know, anything where you're involving people in something that is useful and meaningful, it's not just, you know, showing up, or showing up because you're mad about something happens, and then you move on, you know, I think that, I think those might have been building things, you know, where you're, you're building a depth of engagement in the community, you're giving a venue for people to get together that, you know, might not normally do that, you know, and so, and that's, you know, that's something like a D3 dance, or, you know, so, people tend to, you know, break off to little micro clusters, but something where, you know, there's an organized event of, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna do something, and we're gonna have fun, and we're gonna tie it into something else, maybe we used to do these things, state of the district, you know, presentations, where nobody came, and the reason why nobody came is because it wasn't any reason, so, you know, you really, you have to create a reason for people to wanna be there, because otherwise, you know, people are thinking about getting their kids homework done, they're thinking, you know, getting caught up, or relaxing, waiting for them to begin the next day, so, so something that can be tied to a meal time, I think would be fantastic, or something where they would otherwise come anyway, where you can kind of diffuse something like that, almost like even like a halftime event, during a, during a basketball, just an idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the ideas are relentless, and I think food, it's always a good reason for people to get together, and I know when we were talking about this last month, the idea was also to have special guests, so, Jake.
We have, we have some ideas for Jake, it depends on how inclusive we wanna be, good for some of our partners, and so, which I took, figure out, we got a couple people.
One part about that, we should be trying, we're trying, because of the time we're at right now, we know we were at the press up on holidays, and there were, the press up until New Year, and then, it's wet, so, we did actually discuss that at length, and so, we're gonna try to accelerate it, more than anything else, because another couple of things is that, we also kind of make sure we have, not only kind of our speakers, because that's gonna be really important, to get people there who are able to elicit the types of information we need to get, because we're not necessarily all the strongest at that, so that's another thing we're trying to, both we have, all it becomes part of the calendar, we're trying to do that, can you talk about maybe numbers?
Really, it's a number, when we, when we had the meeting, it was a seven in term time, which is tough, so, another one is clear, straight, I think Alex, the other one, they worked for a few of them, I'm not sure.
Into the next meeting?
Number four.
Okay, well, thank you, I think also, safe to say, that I think Jake is excited about the dinner idea. You got it, right, Jake, and is excited about the diversity dinner, I love it!
Thanks.
Okay, learning and instruction committee.
So that's Carolyn, and Cam is on the phone, Carolyn?
Sure, so we just met before this meeting, we talked a little bit about transition points, fifth to sixth, and then eighth to high school, we also talked about, we kind of asked the question regarding the NTSS data, how are we making sure that students are following the practice, that students aren't getting overlooked, and one of the things that was discussed was that, really every student is, we are aware of every student and where they are, and that the data days have evolved from what they used to be, and that they now are really looking specifically at the student model, but then, the hope is that we can, that soon, to be able to look at them in clusters, in groups, we could use PLD time, and so, we're moving kind of from this, these are me and my kids, to these are all of our students, and this is where they are, and this is the data that supports why they're in the spaces that they're in, and what we need to do to kind of move forward. Those are the two main things to be talking about. We also met, talked a little bit about, improved students that are taking math at Parker now, from fifth grade, and kind of get a little update on that, we're gonna get a little update on that next week.
Yeah, just add one more thing, we're starting an addition, suppose, side road articulation, we're already articulate monthly with 153 and 233, but we're starting some additional work on the topics of creating and homework, where it's okay to be alike, where it's okay to be different, which is what those, what those two areas are being moved forward, we'll start with our department chairs at Parker, the department chairs at Hart and HJ, and we'll...
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, so now, the next item on the exec session, I need a motion, please, to move into exec session to discuss matters relating to personnel, five ILCs, as well as matters relating to student discipline, five ILCs, I need a motion, please. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. I have a close to aye.
I don't think it's five.
Okay, Dana, that consensus, we will be...
No, no, I think it's five.
Okay, all right.
Very agree, very agree.
Very agree.
Yeah, we'll hard agree, okay.
Okay, time is eight twenty-two, I'm probably got ready for meeting, back to order, roll call please.
Grant.
Here.
Nelson.
Hold on, sorry, Cam.
Nelson's coming.
No one helping you!
They can't see.
Nelson.
Nelson.
Briggs.
Here.
Gladman.
Here.
Lanier.
Here.
Krieger.
Here. Quorum is present. Okay, can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes minutes from the August 12th Board of Ed meeting, August 26th Board of Ed meeting, August 26th Executive Session, September 9th Board of Ed meeting, Personnel Report, A Payroll, Employee Request, Norman Lee Villa, cop here, and the Villa... Report A, Payroll, Full A Request, Normandy Bill, Copier, Visibility Prices, Plaid. So moved. Any second, please?
Second.
Roll call? Nelson?
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Praetis?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion has passed. The bills for the month of October were reviewed by Dr. Briggs. May I have a motion to approve the bills for the month of October in the amount of one trillion, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents? So...
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please. Blackman? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Praetis?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion to not approve the resignations of the personnel listed in Personnel Report B, and to direct employees to return to work within twenty-four hours and provide the board thirty days notice of resignation to avoid a report to GIB, Unprofessional Conduct and Submission for Licenseure Section in accordance with Section twenty-four fourteen of the Illinois statute. Yes, that's first. I need the, second? You guys just sound like it's midnight, it's, okay, did you get that? Any questions or concerns? Roll call, please. Lanier? Briggs?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Praetis?
Yes.
Corrigan? Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the preschool and play-based staffing plan across to fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars? So moved. Second. Roll call, please. Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Praetis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Corrigan? Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion to approve the expulsion decision for student twenty twenty-eight? So moved. Second. Any questions? Roll call, please. Briggs?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Praetis?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Corrigan? Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion to approve the expulsion decision for student twenty twenty-eight? So moved. Second. Any questions? Roll call, please. Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Praetis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Corrigan? Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion, please, to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-six PM? So moved. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, please.
Thanks, Cam. I'll call in the speaker.